The Town of Plainville, established in 1721 at the geographical center of Connecticut.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our town council meeting. Tonight is Tuesday, February 22, 2022, 7:00 PM. We'll begin the meeting with Pledge of Allegiance, and I will ask Councilperson Tompkins to please lead us. If you'll please stand. Thank you. Okay, we do not have any presentations tonight, but we do have a public hearing. And before we begin, I will ask our town clerk to please read the notice of the public hearing.
Notice is hereby given that the Plainville Town Council will hold a public hearing at 7:00 PM on Tuesday, February 22, 2022, in the council chambers of the municipal center to hear public comment regarding the ARPA Planning Committee's recommended use of funds dated at Plainville, Connecticut, the 17th day of February, 2022.
Thank you very much. Okay, our public hearing tonight is in regard to the American Rescue Plan Act, which is commonly known among the government people as ARPA. And the town council, along with other members of staff, have been meeting over the past few months to talk about the ARPA funding and some suggested plans for expending that. So before we begin, I'm going to ask our town manager, Robert Lee, to give a bit of an explanation of the process, how we got to where we are, and what's going to happen going forward. So, Robert, if you would please give us the rundown?
Thank you very much. I have about a dozen slides to show. I'll try to get through it fairly quickly so we can get to public comments and questions as well. I do have copies of the presentation available when I'm finished, so if anybody wants to bring home a copy and study it overnight and go through it, maybe tomorrow and the next day, we'll have a copy for you. So with that in mind, the American Rescue Plan, otherwise known as ARPA, at least as far as Connecticut is concerned, municipalities in Connecticut will receive $1.56 billion from that plan. It's distributed on what they call a modified Community Development Block Grant Program. Plainville is considered what they call a non-entitlement municipality, which means that the town will receive our allocation indirectly with the state as a pass-through, acting as a pass-through. So we don't get the monies directly. It comes through the state. State comes to us. Plainville will receive our allocation in two, what they call, tranches. The first one was delivered in June of '21, and the second one is due in June of '22. So we don't have the full amount in hand as of yet. These funds are considered what the federal government is calling prospective, meaning that they are for costs associated after March 3, 2021. Funds must be obligated by December 31, 2024, and liquidated or spent by December 31, 2025, excuse me, 2026. So there's a lot of time before the money even has to be decided upon how to spend it and spent as well. There are several categories where the monies can be spent. If you read various information, it either says four or five categories. I've gone for four, but it does include everything that was in the five categories. For example, so the broad, four broad categories that are eligible for expenses that could be spending is responding to what they call "public health emergency and negative economic impacts" from COVID-19, what's known as revenue loss, number three, provide premium pay, and number four, for water, sewer, or broadband infrastructure. Some of the prohibited uses, you can see here, paying down unfunded pension liabilities. The towns municipalities are not allowed to use it for that, not allowed to use it for paying interest on principal or outstanding debt, cannot use it for paying for consent decrees or legal sentiments, and it cannot be used to contribute to reserve or rainy day funds. The town of Plainville will be receiving $5,189,198. One-half of that amount of $2,594,599 had been received to date. They were received back in, I think it was July. It's supposed to be in June. I think it showed up in early July. None of these dollars have been spent to date. They're just sitting in an account right now. As was pointed out by Chairperson Kathryn Pagliesi earlier, the town council did appoint an ARPA Planning Committee. The committee consisted of three town council members, both myself and the Assistant Town Manager Matt Dasko, Town Finance Director, Town Attorney, Director of Roadways, Superintendent of Water Push Control, and the Director of Technical Services. We also had some invited members, which included the Senior Center Director, the Youth Service Director, and the Library Director. Plainville's path, or proposed path forward of the four broad categories eligible for ARPA spending, the committee has recommended using what we call the revenue loss to access and spend the funds of the four categories, and that's highlighted in red. Why revenue loss? This category was chosen because it is simpler and does not require extensive reporting requirements. It also provides for additional latitude on how the monies can be spent. Why revenue loss? Under the revenue loss category, the funds then can then be spent on what the federal government has termed "government services." What is government services is generally any service that is traditionally provided by a government for their residents. This could include capital expenditures, but it cannot be used on any of the prohibited expenses that we mentioned earlier. The question for tonight's public hearing is whether the town should use the revenue loss category to access the funds to be used for governmental services. Utilizing revenue loss does not prohibit the use of the funds for any of the other three categories, should the town council decide to do so. So it's really just, you know, accepting the funds under revenue loss, the revenue loss category, which gives a little bit more broader opportunity to spend the dollars and not have the detailed requirements that would be done if it was under the other categories. The ARPA committee has gone a little bit further with regards to the recommendations, and that is, they're recommending that the majority of the ARPA monies be used for capital expenditures, most of which have been included in the town's five-year capital plan, some for several years now. The thought process generally was that the CIP plan impact going forward would be reduced, thus becoming a benefit to most of the Plainville taxpayers, as it would not have to pay for them through local taxes. So be able to buy the large capital items that has been in the project, that have been in the plan for many years. At some point in time, the local taxpayers are going to pay for them, and the feeling is, if we use the ARPA dollars, then the local taxpayers would not have to pay for these types of services or these types of purchases. A copy of the list of the potential projects can be found online, and we also have a copy of them here. It's hard to read, but there's a lot of, you know, several capital items, I think most of which, people, if you've gone online, you've seen them, you know. Again, this particular list is a suggestion. It's not something that is being decided upon this evening. Really, the decision that at least town staff is seeking this evening is which category to access the funds, and that's what we're talking about, using the revenue loss category. With regards to these expenditures, the town council would decide upon them on an individual basis. Town staff would come forward. For example, one of the items in here being considered is the purchase of a Vaccon catch basin cleaner. That cost to replace, and the Vaccon catch basin cleaner that we have right now is, I believe, like a, you know, $1995 or something, somewhere along those lines. It's a $450,000 item that's in the capital improvement plan to be paid for. It would be, you know, it would be bid out, a proposal would be received. It would be brought to the town council, and the recommendation would be to use ARPA funding. The council would determine whether that's appropriate on an individual basis. They could decide to hold a public hearing to get public comment as to whether that should be done for that particular item. And that's the way anything on this list would go forward as far as that's concerned. It would go through another approval process. This evening, the main thrust of this evening is to determine what category to utilize with regards to accessing the ARPA funds. So with that in mind, turn it over to the town council to coordinate questions or comments.
Great. Thank you, Robert. Thank you for the information. Okay, that's a good description of what the funds are, where they came from, how much we are going to be getting, by when they have to be expended, and the suggested expenditure avenue that the ARPA committee has thought would be most appropriate for the town of Plainville. And as Robert explained, we can use the loss of revenue category to do this, which gives us greater flexibility in terms of what we can go ahead and use the dollars for. If we go through another avenue, the funds are much more restricted in terms of what we can do. So this does give us a lot of flexibility. Some of the items on that list are, again, keep in mind, suggestions. Nothing has been approved. Nothing has been signed off. We don't have firm quotes for anything. It's just suggested topics that we might consider spending some of these dollars on. So having said that, I will now open the public hearing. If anybody wishes to speak to the public hearing, which would be, as Robert said, the use of the ARPA funds as a revenue, as a loss of revenue, that's pretty much what we're talking about tonight. If you'd please come to the podium right here, please state your name and address, and we will get going. So does anybody wish to speak to the public hearing tonight? Anybody wish to speak to the public hearing? There's a lot of people here, so I'm sure somebody wants to say. Dave, go right ahead.
Thank you. My name's Dave Mazerick. I reside at 71 West Broad Street. One quick issue. I work with Peterson as a cop at the Housing Authority. Phenomenal. He was above and beyond, and I was, I'm sorry that you didn't hire him as the chief. I also do want to thank you for recognizing our brother firefighters. January, I couldn't be here under the weather, so thank you for that recognition.
Glad you're better.
I'm here for the Housing Authority. Loss of revenue, what happened was, we ended up with a $1.5 million grant. In that grant, in the past year, our loss of revenue was $77,600, because we had to have so many vacancies because of moving people around. What we did was, we replaced 100 doors down at Woodmore, 60 doors front and back down at Centerview. We did five handicap kitchens in Woodmore, and also every single bathroom in Woodmore, which was desperately needed. And I thank Robert Lee and his secretary for helping us with that, because it went from $800,000 to $1.5 million. Less than 24 hours, we did the needs and everything else. But with that, we had to spend $80,000 for architecture, which was, you know, to get that grant, also with our loss of rent. But with that, with BRD developers, we ended up with saving some money, so we actually put more back into the project. Also here on our fire panel, our fire panel serves two purposes. One, fire suppression, smoke detectors, that works perfect. The other problem is the police end of it. We have pole cords. It used to alarm to every single building and apartment. Now we're at the point, and I was working with Peterson desperately on this, now it just does the building. So at 2:00 in the morning, we have to wake possibly 10 residents up to find out who pulled the pole cord. Yes, it's a safety need. Out of 120, you know, residents we have there, 129 residents and 120 apartments, it's tough. We know what building, but we don't know what apartment. And it's about an $80,000 bill. I got three bids, and $80,000 was the lowest to repair that fire panel. So that's what I'm here for. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathy?
Yes?
Just, Dave, with regards to the Housing Authority, there is, you know, some monies put aside, or at least suggested for that, and that was information we had gotten, I believe, from Linda. So you're looking for more than that. But I just wanted to know that that's where that number came from.
Okay, that's why I'm pleading well. Oh, and another thing. I don't know who my liaison is to the Housing Authority. If you are, Kathy, please give her my cell phone number. I'd love to sit and have a chat with you.
I will do that.
Thank you.
Of course. All right. Okay, does anybody else wish to speak to the council regarding the public hearing? Yes?
Hi, my name's Mary Carpenter, and I'm here from the Honor Heights. And I have missed the last couple meetings, unfortunately, but I was just curious, was there any possibility of any of this money going in towards the hookup of the sewers for Honor Heights?
Robert, can you help me with that? We had talked about it, but I would like him to fill in some of the specifics.
During our discussions with regards to the ARPA funding, town staff, finance staff also pointed out that we have LOSEP dollars, local capital improvement dollars, that has been grant monies that the town has saved up for local capital improvement programs to the tune of about $600,000. And the decision of the ARPA Planning Committee was to use those LOSEP dollars to move forward with the Honor Heights sewer extension rather than going through ARPA. The reason for that is that LOSEP monies can only be spent on certain items as well, capital items. They can't be used on all capital items. The feeling was, we could use up the great majority of that, of those, of the dollars that we've saved up for that project all by itself. It would be a smoother operation rather than chop it up into three, or four, or five different capital improvement. So there is monies that the council is considering for utilizing. Town staff has pointed out that those grant monies that we had saved up under LOSEP would, and those estate grant monies, would be appropriate for the expansion, and that's, and the council has, you know, at least the council members that were on the ARPA committee were supportive of that. So that project is still moving forward. Town is still trying to put together a final plan. We hope to have some type of public hearing on that specific project sometime in perhaps April.
And so you don't know, like, the amount of what it might be and how much that we're all going to have to put out?
We're talking about a project that could be in the $1.2 to $1.4 million range. We're talking about assessing, at least the proposal is to assess beneficial assessments of about $10,000 per unit, which would raise about $840,000 with the 84 homes that are there. And that the net amount of $600,000, if it was up at the, you know, with the $1.4 million range, could be covered using those LOSEP dollars. So that's how that would be funded, at least that's what the plan is right now.
Okay, and just one other question. I wanted to know, when other areas were hooked up, did they have to pay for theirs as well?
Yes.
I mean, how did that work?
They paid a beneficial assessment way back when, you know. And beneficial assessments today on sewer extensions are ranging, you know, in other communities, anywhere from $25,000 to $30,000, if not more. And I do know that when the Honor Heights project was considered back in the early '90s or the mid-'90s, they were talking, although they didn't give specific dollars, they were talking in the range of $30,000 beneficial assessment. So this is greatly reduced from what you would have paid in the '90s, and certainly greatly reduced from what you would pay even today if you were in another community.
It's just that, you know, it's going to be a big chunk, obviously, for us to each, you know, put out $10,000, and then to have it hooked up to our homes. And God forbid, in between this time now and when they're hooked up, one of our sewers goes, one of our septics goes, what we're going to be paying, we're going to be paying for the hookup, a whole new septic, and then...
Well, you wouldn't be paying for the septic if you were doing the hookup.
Well, but before that, if it happens before that. What happens if it happens in five months and we hook up in a year? So we dished out $14,000 for a sewer system, you know, that we had to, you know, get, obviously, in order to flush our toilets and run our water.
Right. Right. Well, two things. One is that it's not mandatory hookup. It would not be a mandatory hookup, so you could choose when to do that. Second one is...
But we're still paying that $10,000, no matter what.
But, yeah, if you want me to finish, I'll address that. That would be allowed to be paid over a period of time, probably over a period of 10 years with a minimal interest rate, straight interest rate, and, you know, so it's not that the $10,000 would have to come up all at once.
No, I understand.
Your property is going to increase in value by more than $10,000, just so you know as well.
See, I looked into that, and it says no, that when you get a hookup with regular sewers, that does not happen.
No, you should talk to an appraiser, then. Talk to an appraiser. If you go to sell your house, and you've got a 30-year-old septic system, you're going to get a lot less money for your house than if you had sewers available. A lot less money.
I'll check that. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak to the public hearing tonight? Mr. Frangos? We actually would like you up there so we could get it recorded, please.
Oh, you want to do it right here?
I know, it's a little, we'll wait for you.
Watch those steps, though.
Yeah. Lou Frangos, 10 Fairbanks Street. Two basic questions. All approvals for this, would this be always, when they say, will these always have public hearings for all funds to be generated?
For all the expenditures? I'm not sure how that is going to work, actually, going forward. Right now, we're, the council tonight is going to vote on the concept of using the ARPA monies as a lost revenue source, and that's really what we're talking about tonight. In terms of spending those dollars, some of them are very large ticket items. We may very well have public hearing on some of those, yes. Robert had talked about that.
It's not an automatic process.
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry. It's not an automatic process.
Nothing is automatic about this, Mr. Frangos, because it's something we've never dealt with before, but I think with the guidance of the town manager and the council, we'll come to some sort of methodology. Yes, Robert?
I would point out that all of them would be, all of the expenditures would be, would come before the town council at a public meeting. And you know that all the town council meetings, there's opportunity for public comment, whether there would be a formal public hearing or not, which your hearing is probably on the larger items, maybe not on the smaller. But all of them would be done publicly with the opportunity for the public to comment.
If you second...
Thank you. Yep.
...question is, what was it? Committee meetings, are they open to the public?
Yes. They have been open, yes. Yes.
Okay, that's it. That's all there is. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Does anybody else wish to speak that hasn't done so? Mr. Grahamboy?
I'm getting old enough. I gotta have my glasses.
Yep, you're not alone.
No fun. Andre Grahamboy, 42, Maxine, oh.
You have to turn it on. Thank you.
Andre Grahamboy, 42, Maxine Road, Plainville, Connecticut. As far as the capital improvements, I got no problem with that at all. I'm kind of glad to see you got the fire truck in there so we don't have to go to referendum. I do need some clarification, though. One of them would be, oh, sidewalk repair and replacement.
Right.
When I bought my house 45 years ago, I signed a petition to get the sidewalks fixed. I guess it's finally coming around, hopefully.
We'll give you credit for it if you want it.
Thanks.
I don't, I'm not sure that's...
Maxine and Bernice Court.
Not sure that's the case, but it's okay.
I gotta mow the sidewalk because of the grass coming up.
Mm-hmm, okay.
It's embarrassing. Okay. The other items, oh, Plainville High School repair of the exterior 54 section. Just to give you a little history perspective on that, that 54, that's 1954?
Yes.
Okay, the high school was dedicated in 1956, so I'm assuming this is the area where the superintendent was, and we renovated like new about 10 years ago, so I don't know why we, why we're expending money again there.
That wasn't done, Andy. That brickwork wasn't done.
It wasn't done?
No.
So we spent all that money to renovate the Plainville High School?
It wasn't done.
Wasn't done. Spent the money, and it just wasn't done. Okay.
You didn't spend that on the brick.
Mountain View Pump Station, up, upgrade. Mr. Lee, you taught me all about minutia. $87,000. It's already been, already been completed.
Yes.
Do you think, do you really think that my sewer use fund, my bill that I get twice a year, will come down, not even 10 cents, with $87,000 in that fund?
You do realize that the sewer user fee has not increased, you know, last year or the year before?
That's not my point. My point is...
Well, the point I'm making is that the reason for that is because there is sufficient funds in the sewer user fund to prevent that from happening.
Right.
And this is one, at least this one suggestion, is that by putting some additional dollars in there, that can continue going forward.
Well, I don't think it's going to lower it or even keep it the same.
Okay.
Anyways, that's my opinion. That's yours. One of the things that caught me kind of weird was the police department to be determined.
Correct.
I had an opportunity to meet the chief, and we spent a good, good time together. And it's like, he's an afterthought. I'd like to divert some of those funds, at least give him $250,000. So he's, bring the chief, give him the tools to do the job. That's all I'm, I don't know what he's got to do, what he wants to do, but he kind of said to me, gee, $250,000 would be a nice number. Well, you know what? That'd be a nice number. Where you're going to get it, that's up to you guys. But let me show you where you might get it.
Well, again, you know, it's not an exhaustive list, and all these numbers can definitely be changed across the way, so, you know, nothing is final yet.
Okay. Plainville Housing Authority, as you know, Kathy, I was the liaison there, so I'm pretty caught up with that, even though I haven't been there in a long time. But I read their last minutes, and this number came from Linda De Senza, who I worked with before in the past. So she's a little more up on it, on what Mr. Mazerick, who was the chairman of that committee, and they've just raised their rents to 600 and 650. Granted, there's seniors in there that are paying 30% of their income, so some of them are paying less than $150 a month. But I can guarantee you that their total revenue is probably closer to $3 million. So $25,000 is like, eh, here you go. Have a good time. I don't think they really need it. West Cemetery Expansion and Tree Removal. They've been incorporated since 1929. They're a business. Why are we supporting a business? I don't understand it. And if it does come up for a vote, I've spoken to Mr. Underwood, and he understands it was kind of slipped to his mind. He's the chairman of that board there, and he gets a stipend for it. It would kind of be like an ethical problem for him to vote on it. It wouldn't make a difference if he just recused himself, but I think he should. The other thing, and then I'm going to get out of here. Oh, replace the Tofflon chiller. That was all a new school. It only lasted 10 years. We've got to replace the chiller already?
I asked Mr. Bustle to be here. He's the facilities director. If you'd like, I can bring him forward, and he could answer that question.
Okay, because I think after we gave him a brand-new school...
Can you let him answer the question?
I'll let him answer the question, wherever he is.
He's here. He's right here. Steve, come on forward. Why don't you use the microphone right here?
Oh, Steve. I haven't seen Steve in a long time.
How are we doing tonight? Yeah, you're right. That chiller was brand-new with the renovation in 2008, so that makes that chiller 14 years old now.
Okay.
In the last three years, we've put about $50,000 into repair on it. So we've kind of got a lemon there.
Oh, okay.
So in order to try to keep the building operational, especially during these times right now where we need to ventilate and air condition as much as possible, we're suggesting that we use some of these monies to replace that chiller so we have something more reliable there.
We're not going to buy a lemon this time, right?
No.
Okay.
We won't be going with just what's, a contractor comes in and bids in a package.
Okay.
We'll be specking something out.
All right. Oh, the other, infrastructure improvements at White Oak, maybe it was just written wrong, but I don't understand it. The way it's written, you're giving Manafort $150,000, he's going to give us back $100? $150,000. He's going to give us back $100. Can I have that deal?
Yes. Robert, can you flesh that out for us?
Yeah, during the negotiations with regards to the purchase of the property, the council wanted to get $500,000 for the property, you know, and going forward with the improvements that were to be made. Manafort indicated that they, you know, they were willing to pay the $500,000, though they only had... But they wanted a commitment from the town that we would seek some grant funding, you know, to help offset some of the infrastructure costs. And so the arrangement that was made was that they would give the town $400,000, and if the town acquired at least $100,000 of a grant, that first $100,000, then they would pay the remaining $100,000. So it's kind of a little different...
So what's $150,000 at that we're coughing up?
We're not coughing it up. It's ARPA monies, number one.
Oh, it's still tax money that comes from me also.
Okay, if you let me answer the question.
Sure.
Yeah, you know, $150,000 is what was suggested to get at least $100,000 back. We want this project to move forward, and we've actually applied for another grant in the tune of like $1.2 million. Hopefully, we'll get that grant, and we wouldn't even spend any ARPA dollars. So we're seeking other sources, but this is one that we put in here so that we guarantee to get the $500,000 if we use the ARPA dollars. So it's really kind of a placeholder right now. Nothing's going to go in that direction unless we exhaust all of the other opportunities to get grant monies from other sources.
Okay. I'm done, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council that has not done so? Anybody else? Oh, Tom.
Where are my football hat? Damn that thing. Anyway, Thomas R. Carey, senior, 4 Autumn Lane. I just wanted to go back to one thing on the high school, which I could ask Steve when I'm in there on Thursdays, but there was a little bit of confusion. They were talking about the area where the superintendent used to be, which is out front toward East Street, but what they're calling the 54 wing is behind that.
The original section.
Is the original section. And that's why I was wondering, what is the brickwork, Steve?
It's the masonry.
What we're looking to do is get the building repointed. The mortar's been failing on the building, being that that part of the building was built in the mid-'50s, and I think it was an addition in '56, and the wing we're talking about there was in '61 or '62, along with the tech ed wing. But the original Phase 1, a two-story building, has never really been worked on. Areas like the smokestack, I'm actually losing brick off of it now. So that's becoming a safety issue. The main problem, though, with the brick and the mortar spalling like that, besides pieces falling, is the moisture penetration to the building. So...
Okay, that was never done when we did that total rehab then?
No, no. There was no brickwork besides repair where there was broken stuff.
Yeah, that slipped by us, I guess.
I have it in the project, middle school, to seal the entire outside of the building.
Yeah, that's good. That's part of what I was bringing up. I could have done this Thursday when I see you, but, you know, I may miss you on Thursday. Just as a note, though, Andy started to mention it. In 1954, there wasn't even a hole in the ground there. The signing for the contract for the school was in November of '54. They had that formal where they throw a shovel over their shoulders, but they really didn't start actual construction until '55, and September of '56 is when it opened. But no, I just wanted to clear between the two wings and why we missed that, so we won't miss it on the middle school. So... Okay, that has nothing to do with this. I just thought I'd bring it up. Thank you. Have a nice evening.
Okay, thank you so much.
You may recall, Tom, that when we were doing the project budget for the high school, that there was a lot of sentiment to keep that cost as low as possible and to use, you know, ways to reduce costs, and I think that may have been the reason why it was determined that to keep the cost down, that we didn't have to do everything that would be, you know, that you might want to do.
Yeah, I know. It was a big-ticket item, wasn't it?
Right, right. So I don't think it's anything that was missed. I think there was a conscious decision to say, well, we can debate it. I'm just saying that. I wouldn't say that it was, you know, that it was missed or not considered at all.
I don't remember it being actually specifically discussed. I remember there was a lot of problems over how the bidding went and how the estimate was made, and, you know, they estimated with a crayon instead of a pencil and, you know, different things like that. It was a... You know, we had a lot of problems with that back then, but the good point was we got the schools renovated where they belong, and as long as we continue the program is what's needed.
And that's the reason why we want to do this work, to keep it up, so we don't have to do another... How many million dollars was it, 60 million?
I think that was 55, 60, somewhere around. There was a... Well, we did... We were doing another school at the same time. The whole projects were going. We were doing a couple schools.
That's right.
One right after the other.
As we travel down memory lane here.
I think we did Tofflon and the high school at the same time.
Just be careful with the memory lane. It's white hair. I forget some things. Have a nice evening.
Thanks, Tom. Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so? Anybody else wish to make comment? Last chance. Okay. Hearing no further comments, I will close the public hearing. Thank you all for your comments and your observations, and the council will... You know, I'm sure you'll be hearing a lot more about this as we move forward in the next few years, so thank you again.
Good night, Joe.
Okay. Bye, Joe. All right. Next on our agenda is minutes of the previous meeting. May I have a motion to approve, please?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to approve February 7, 2022, regular meeting, minutes meeting for the meeting.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Announcements and reports. Does anybody have any announcements or reports to make tonight from the council? Rose Merritt's not your week?
Well, actually, I did attend, as Lee is on, my first meeting with the Chamber of Commerce, so I will be having... Reporting on them as time goes on.
Okay.
And the housing authority hasn't met in the last two months, but I'm looking forward to going to their meetings.
Okay. Thank you for that. Anybody else have anything to report? I'll just make a very brief report. I attended the... I have been attending the Board of Education Budget Work Sessions, and the Board of Education did vote on the budget for next year and referred it to town. The town manager received it. They had to have it in by February 14th, so it has been turned over to the town manager, and we will get a closer look at that in the weeks to come. So that's been their major concern of the board lately. So if there are no other reports, I'll move on to appointments and reappointments to boards and commissions. I don't think we have any appointments on our agenda tonight, but I didn't know if anybody else has any that we need to catch up on. No. All right. Thank you. Port of the Town Attorney. Good evening. How are you?
Good evening. No report tonight.
Okay. Thank you for being with us. All right, moving along to the report of the town manager, Mr. Lee.
I do have a couple of items, the first of which is the Tomlinson Avenue Bridge Construction. Dayton Construction Company has notified town staff that they will begin work on the replacement of the Tomlinson Avenue Bridge this week. They're actually supposed to start today. Mike, did they ever go?
No, Robert. Did receive an email that they're going to start March 1st.
Okay, so they've been delayed. Okay, so the new date is March 1st, and I think that came today. You could receive that, right? Okay. Their initial work will include clearing and grubbing, some test pits, control and removal of invasive vegetation, and the installation of a field office. Dayton will implement an alternating one-way traffic pattern when needed during this period. The Plainville Police Department will handle traffic control as well. Dayton is not anticipating the closure of the road to vehicular traffic until early April, and that's probably going to be pushed back as well. The plan calls for the existing corrugated metal pipes to be replaced with concrete box culverts. Pedestrian traffic will be maintained during the duration of the project. So even though the road might be closed to motor vehicles, it'll be open to pedestrians. Town staff is working with the school administration and Daco Bus Company to reroute the buses when the road closes. I can't tell you. It's in April, Sam. Maybe we'll get to the end of the school year. Who knows? Next item I have is the pedestrian crossing at the high school. Town staff has confirmed that the State Department of Transportation will allow for the installation of a rapid rectangular flashing beacon at the crosswalk located on Route 10 and Robert Holcomb Way. After further review with the DOT, the crosswalk will be able to remain in the same location. The project will include some work with the sidewalk to address the ramps leading to the crosswalk so that they conform with state specifications. Town staff is preparing a formal plan. Actually, the formal plan has been submitted, John? You sent that to me today. See, you're getting the most up-to-date information. And we expect the work will be completed before the start of school in September. Monies to complete this project will come from the Town Aid Road account. Next item I have is the White Oak Remediation LEP Request for Proposals. As reported at the last town council meeting, two firms have been interviewed to oversee the environmental cleanup of the White Oak site. Carl Harburger, Matt Daskel, and Mark DeVoe interviewed the two firms. It is their unanimous recommendation that the town council award the work to Ty and Bond. This recommendation is based on their strong... There being Ty and Bond, strong understanding of the project's scope and the needs of the community. The Ty and Bond proposal was the most complete one of the respondents detailing fully anticipated costs, timelines, and a good understanding of the past and future efforts. Ty and Bond will serve as the licensed environmental professional or LEP to oversee remedial contractor bidding, investigation, cleanup, and required documentation. There is an item under new business that would authorize the town manager to enter negotiations with Ty and Bond of Middletown to serve as the LEP firm overseeing remediation efforts of the former White Oak Corporation property and to utilize previously secured state DECD Brownfield remediation grant to fund said services in the amount of $143,883.90. If approved, Ty and Bond will immediately begin the planning work with the final cleanup expected to be done in the fall. Road paving bid. Town staff continues to plan for the next phase of the road bond program, which will begin in April. In 2018, the town received nine proposals for contractors to provide construction repairs and adjustments to catch basins on various streets. Jones Construction was awarded the contract at that time, and the town council has extended their contract for the last couple of years with the same payment provisions that were previously bid. They have performed their work in an exemplary manner for Plainville. Town staff is recommending that the town council continue to engage Jones Construction to provide similar work this spring at the same unit prices that they bid in 2018. Town staff is also recommending that the purchase of concrete block for catch basins be awarded to Cromwell Concrete under the state bid contract in an amount not to exceed $50,000. Cromwell Concrete has provided this material in previous years. So there are two items under new business regarding these recommendations. Next item I have is the disposal of a pickup truck. Town staff is seeking approval from the town council to dispose of a 2003 GMC pickup truck previously used by both roadways and the water pollution control departments. The truck has extensive structural deterioration along both frame rails, a disconnected crossmember, and deteriorated rear shock mounts. These conditions are not deemed repairable, and the vehicle has no trade-in value. There is an item under new business requesting permission to dispose of the 2003 GMC pickup truck at auction. So we do send it to auction, but, you know, we don't expect to get much for it, if approved by the council. The COVID-19 update. This is going to include some statistics, so take notes if that's your forte. A recent Hartford Current article reported that there are different risk levels between Connecticut towns based on how many people have been vaccinated. The chief medical officer at Yale New Haven Health stated that, in quotes, "Vaccination rate in the population where you live is one factor that can impact the transmissibility and the number of infections," unquote. Other factors include, quote, "how much ventilation, distancing, and masking," unquote, one encounters. As of last Thursday, February 17, 71% of the Plainville population had been fully vaccinated. This compares to 76% in Southington, 72% in Bristol, 87% in Farmington, and 60% in New Britain. With respect to children ages 5 to 11, 33% of the children in Plainville have been fully vaccinated. Surrounding town percentages for children between the ages of 5 and 11, Southington... So Plainville at 33, Southington at 33, Bristol at 25%, Farmington at 58%, and New Britain at 18%. Governor Lamont has lifted the state mask mandate for students in school as of February 28. It is up to the local school boards to determine whether to continue a mask mandate beyond that date. Absent positive action to require masks in school, the mandate will sunset. Masks will still be required for those students when they travel on the school bus. This is a federal mandate. It's similar to if you go into an airport nowadays, you still have to wear a mask. That's still in place. That same rule carries for school bus transportation. I understand the Board of Education is meeting tomorrow evening, 6:15, I believe it is? And that's a virtual meeting where they will discuss this. Whether there's a motion made or not remains to be seen, but the board is going to be discussing whether or not to continue that mask mandate beyond February 28, is my understanding, tomorrow evening. If they take no action again, it goes away. Today, Plainville has had 3,425 confirmed and presumed positive COVID cases since the pandemic started. There have been 51 total deaths reported. Case positivity currently stands at 47.7 per 100K population. Last week, Plainville had 45 cases reported. The previous week, the number was 72. For the week beginning January 22, 2022, unvaccinated persons had a 3.1 times greater risk of testing positive for COVID compared to somebody who was fully vaccinated. For the week beginning January 30, 2022, unvaccinated persons had a 15.2 times greater risk of dying from COVID compared to a fully vaccinated person. The good news is that the hospital rate for COVID continues to decline, suggesting that persons are getting less severe symptoms from COVID. Beginning next Monday, 2/28, persons entering town buildings will no longer be required to wear masks. It will be left up to each individual whether to wear a mask. Masks will still be available at the entrances of each town building. Next item I have is the financial dashboard for the town that was put on the town website and also distributed to town council members for this evening's meeting. And this dashboard goes through the first seven months of the fiscal year through January 31. With regards to the total town budget, total town budget as amended, there's been some additional appropriations, stands at approximately $64.5 million. Percent spent to date is about 61%. Two-year average is about 58.56. You know, so we're pretty much in line with two-year average. The general government budget as amended is $24.67 million. To date, we've spent 65.83%. Two-year average is 65.03. Board of Education's budget, $39.8 million. They've spent about 58% of their budget. Their two-year average is somewhere around 55%. As far as police overtime is concerned, to date, we've spent $388,000 of the $550,000 budget, which is about 71%. That's a little bit behind the two-year average, so it's pretty much in line with what the two-year average has been. We do expect to go over budget as far as police overtime this year, as we have in previous years. previous years. Perhaps not as much as in previous years, though. Roadways overtime, we're we've spent to date over the budgeted amount. However, it is behind the two-year, behind the two-year average by about $3,500. And we've talked about that at previous meetings as well. Nothing's changed in the last in the last month from previous discussions. Buildings and grounds overtime running slightly behind the two-year average as well. They've spent 78% of their budget, buildings and grounds, as far as overtime is concerned. Roadways, snow, and buildings and grounds, snow overtime. To date, the roadways have spent about $19,600. Two-year average is $19,100. You may recall that last year was a was a relatively quiet year. The year before was a relatively busy year as far as snow removal. So the average, the two-year average, we're pretty much at the two-year average. But we've only spent to date 37% of our budget on snow removal. Buildings and that's that's what roadways, buildings and grounds, their budget is $25,000. They've spent $7,300 to date. It's about that's 28, about 29% of their budget. They're running behind the two-year average by about $4,000. So on the expenditure side, things are, you know, looking relatively good as far as expenditures are concerned. No major concerns with regards to expenditures in the budget this year. I would point out that as far as municipal solid waste, what we call hauler tonnages, the amount we bring to the Bristol facility, we have budgeted that we would bring 6,000 tons this year. We've, you know, through through the first seven months, we've we've been at 3,600 tons. That's pretty much in line with the two-year average. We're estimating that we will be going over budget on municipal solid waste if the same trend continues by about $15,000. That is less than last month's estimate, so that so, you know, the tonnages are coming down slightly. So that's a little bit on the negative side. But on the positive side, recycling continues to, recycling revenue that we get continues to be significantly, or or the amount we pay as a tip fee for 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 recycling continues to be significantly less than what we had budgeted, what we were experiencing at this time last year. We're pretty much in line with the with the tonnages. However, the tip fee, right now, we're paying about $19.61 per ton to dispose of recycling. Last year, that tip fee was $71.85. We budgeted $74 a ton at the time. That was that was deemed, that was, we were pretty much experiencing last year. So if this tip rate continues, the budget, the budget savings in recycling alone is expected to be somewhere around $83,000. So a little bit more on on the municipal solid waste, but significantly less on the recycling. So as far as revenues are concerned, we've received 80, 82.5% to date on all revenues. Two-year average is about 84.4%. So we're pretty much in line with that. As far as current taxes are concerned, we've collected 92.74% of what we budgeted for current taxes. And current taxes make up $48 million, 40, $48.3 million of the budget of $63.4 million. So, you know, two-thirds, a little bit more than two-thirds of our of our revenues come from current taxes. We've received 92.74% to date. The two-year average at this point in time is 93.77%. So we're pretty close to what our two-year average is. We expect to collect pretty much close to what we budgeted as far as current taxes is concerned, if not a little bit more. The unassigned fund balance did not change from last month. We have an unassigned fund balance of $9.88 million. As far as our special funds are concerned, recreation fund, we're collecting, you know, recreation fund is a little difficult because because of the pandemic. We received 38 point, 38% of our revenues to date. Two-year average is about 41%. And again, last year was very low, the year before was a little bit higher. As far as that's on the expenditure side, excuse me, that's on the expenditure side. On the revenue side, we've received more monies than than we've than we've spent to date, and we're a little bit ahead of our two-year average as far as receipt of revenues. With regards to Robertson Airport, we spent 90% of what was budgeted. 90% of the budget is is the payment in lieu of taxes to the town for the, you know, for the ownership of the airport. So that's that's not unexpected. We spent on capital and other expenditures this year about $190,000 to date, and our Robertson Airport fund balance is a little bit right around a half a million dollars. With regards to the water pollution control budget, we spent 70% of our budget. Two-year average is 62%. At this point in time, a good portion of those expenses has to do with the startup of the new phosphorus operation. So there was some startup cost with regards to that. We did budget for it, but, you know, we've spent some upfront dollars, which puts us a little bit ahead of the percentage of past years. We received, as far as user charges are concerned, 95% of what was budgeted. Two-year average is about 97.5%. So we're pretty much in line as far as that's concerned. The public library budget, expenditures at 62%, two-year average is at 63.5%. So we're right in line as far as that's concerned. As far as the library revenues are concerned, we've received about 69%. Two-year average is is 77%. Part of that has to do with revenue that we're receiving from from invested funds, from their from their trustee accounts. As far as our major projects, major projects report, and we we we've tracked the road bond, the phosphorus removal project was not necessarily completed yet. Wheeler School Project, it's in operation, but it's not totally completed yet. The Wheeler School Project, the Plainville High School Turf Maintenance Fund, the ARPA Funding, and the town line road reconstruction, which is funded entirely by grant funds. No changes from the previous month. There's really been no expenditures, you know, during the month of January. So we're we're still running on budget under with regards to all of those projects. So that's all I have to report as far as the dashboard is concerned. Again, this report is online for those who want to go to the town webpage. And so, Matt, do you have happenings? So I'll turn it over to Matt for happenings, and when he's finished, we'll be available to answer any questions you may have for us.
Perfect.
Good evening through you, town manager Lee and council chairperson. The first item I have is the Affordable Housing Plan Survey. The deadline has been extended. So the town of Plainville, as required under state statute, is preparing an affordable housing plan for adoption at approximately June of this year. As part of that effort, we have provided an Affordable Housing Plan Survey online for residents to review and offer their feedbacks so that this plan can be designed to meet the community's needs. That deadline has been extended through February 28th, 2022. Information is available on plainvillect.com as well as the survey. We also did provide printed copies at several different locations throughout town. So if folks are unable to get online and and want to submit it in paper, we will do the digitization for them. The second item I have is that delinquent bills were sent out for past due taxes, due January 1, delinquent at the beginning of this month. Residents are just reminded that those balances due are good through the end of the month. Additional interest will accrue in March. So now is the time to bring your accounts to current. And finally, I have senior center happenings as usual. All drop-in activities are going to return to the senior center beginning March 7. Included in this are a list of exciting activities such as mahjong, pinnacle, Mexican train, Scrabble, setback, bridge, women's and men's brush-up pool lessons, cribbage, charlemagne and pool tournaments, all at the senior center. Contact the senior center or online for further information. Book buds, the February book of the month, is The Wonder Boy of Whistle Stop by Fanny Flag. The event will be Friday, February 25th at 10:00 AM. Cost is free. Again, registration is online at scheduleplus.com/plainville or by contacting the senior center at 747-5728. And the final one I have is just a reminder of the fitness class offerings that they have. And again, we make those available online. Happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Thank you, Matt. Does anybody have any questions for either Robert or Matt regarding the reports tonight? Good? Okay. All right. Thank you both very much. Well done. All right. Moving on, the next item we have on our agenda is the public comment section. During this time, we welcome the public to come to the podium. You will have three minutes to speak to the council. Please state your name and address. Does anybody wish to speak to the council? Long walk over there. Just hit the center button. Thank you. Yep.
Lou Frangos, 10 Fairbanks Street. The first thing I'd like to ask is, I see item 12 under the agenda, town manager search profile. During that presentation, will questions be able to be asked by the by the people here? Or is that just a broad overview?
Well, what that is, is we have engaged a firm to help us do a a search for the town manager vacancy, which we're going to be having coming up. And the firm has created a profile regarding the town manager's position and pretty much profiled the whole town as a as a part of that. So we're just going to be discussing as among the council, if we're going to be going ahead with the recommendations, if there's any final changes and and that sort of thing. So it's really just to try and finally get this moving off the ground and put that out there.
The requirements. Okay. No, the reason I ask is, you know, this, to be honest with you, I'd like to hear from the manager that he refuses to retire. He's staying, but that's not going to happen. So I know that.
We've kept him longer than he probably anticipated at first, so tread lightly, Lou.
Yeah. So in other words, we haven't even looked looked for a manager.
No, that's not exactly accurate. At the end of last year, the council did interview a few folks. We had put out a request for interested people, and we did interview some, and it didn't work out in terms of, you know, the fit of the person to the town, to to what the council was looking for. So after going through that exercise where it was pretty much managed in-house, we thought perhaps we need to engage somebody that would have a broader reach, greater network of folks to reach out to. So we engaged a firm to do this for us. We'll, of course, still have the final interviewing and things of that nature, but they're going to help us out.
So right now, it's a working process?
It is, yes.
Okay.
After tonight, we're going to kick it off the ground and really get moving.
I don't want to use the word concern, but I just find it odd that the gentleman retires, and you've heard nothing about a replacement, as opposed to in the case of the chief. You know, even the information that nazzles, you hear something, but this has seemed to be dead silent. And I mean, just it's curiosity on my part.
Right. And that that's what's happening right now, is we're really engaged. As I said, we engaged a firm to do this for us, and they're going to be putting the the announcement out through a network of different places and people and organizations. And they're going to go through some of those applications and make sure we're going to be interviewing folks that would really be a good fit for our town. And so we're really just getting it going at this point.
May I have two more minutes?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. And number two is, one of the things I've noticed in the town council meetings, and I've been neglecting it somewhat myself, but I never see an educate, the Board of Education liaison meeting. I never see one here.
You know, we do have it on our agenda, and 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 as a matter of fact, any liaison, anybody from the Board of Ed is welcome to come and give us an update. Sometimes I provide an update because I'm the liaison to the board, so I try to keep things going. But, you know, people are busy. People try to fit a lot of things into their schedule, and sometimes they just aren't able to make it.
I'm sorry. Okay, that ought to be my fault. Maybe you can correct me on this. I thought when it says liaison, it's a representative from the Board of Education, not from within your function, our function.
That's correct. I'm the liaison to the board from the council. So I'd go to their meetings and provide updates, but the board also has somebody assigned to the council that would do the same.
And especially with this time with COVID, you know, the way things have been going on in school systems, it'd be nice to hear, because Plainville seems to be doing very well.
Yep.
So. And the final thing, if I may, just a quick one. I brought this up before, and I'm just so curious. This Wheeler School, we're shown over $2 million is still hanging out there. Shouldn't this project be pretty much put to bed?
I think it's very close. There may be some smaller final items that need to just be checked off the punch list in order to get that over. Am I, is that accurate, Robert? They're very close to finishing.
We have submitted a reimbursement request to the state, and and until we receive that reimbursement from, you know, till they accept the reimbursement and they don't hold back any dollars, we we don't, we're not ready to close out the project.
Okay.
So that's really the reason. I think 99.9% of the work has has been spent, and we're we're waiting to see what type of reimbursement they're going to give us, because there's eligible items, there's ineligible items. And, you know, you know, our consultants have said that this is what we anticipate you're going to get for reimbursement, but sometimes the state turns around and says, well, you say that's eligible, we say it's not eligible, then we fight about it, and, you know, it drags on for a little while.
So it's a negotiation. I'm sorry.
Right.
I'm sorry. Negotiation with the state then.
Yes. And you may recall that, if you've been following in the newspapers, that the person in charge of the school construction grants is is has been fired, and, you know, and the FBI is involved, and 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 any school construction grants have been taken out of Department of Administrative Services and put back, actually put into DAS, it was taken out of OPM. I think that's holding up to a certain degree.
Yes, sir.
The resolution of what's going to happen at Wheeler School as far as our reimbursement is concerned. So this may drag on for a little while.
I understand.
But that's the reason why it's there. We've we've spent 90, 9.99% of the.
No, I don't mean that to be an accusing finger. It just seems so strange that that's been hanging out there so long. That that's the only reason.
That's that's primarily a reason.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council tonight? Anybody else looking around? I'm probably thinking, no. Okay. If nobody else is interested, we'll close that item. We do not have any old business. We'll move on to new business items. May I have a motion for item number one, please?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to utilize the state local fiscal recovery fund standard allowance under the loss revenue category, taking the $10 million exemption.
Second. I have a motion and a second and a discussion on that motion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number two, please.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to authorize the town manager to enter into negotiations under state contract number 18 PSX 0153 with Ty &amp; Bond of Middletown, Connecticut, to serve as the LEP, LEP firm overseeing remediations efforts of the former White Oak Corporation under REP number 202212. White Oak Remediations LEP and to utilize the previously secured state DECD brownfield remediation grant to fund said services in the amount of $143,883.90.
Okay. May I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number three, please.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to approve the extension of contract number 2018-13E, construction, repairs, and adjustments of catch basins on various streets with Jones Construction LLC, Farmington, Connecticut, for the 2022 road bond construction season in the amount not to exceed $50,000.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Excuse me.
Any opposed?
Excuse me for a second.
Yes, Robert.
John, was it $50,000? Is that a typo?
That's a fair number.
That's the number? Okay. All right. Just wanted to make sure.
Okay. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number four, please.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to award bid number 2022-19B, concrete blocks and bricks to Cromwell Concrete, Cromwell, Connecticut, in the amount not to exceed $50,000.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number five.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to authorize the disposal of the 2003 GMC pickup truck at auction.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Sounds like it's really lost its last breath, right, Dave? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number six.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Motion to approve the tax refunds as listed on the addendum.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Thank you for all of that. Moving along, other discussions of interest. We have one item under here, the Town Manager Search Profile. Mr. Lee, would you like to just fill us in on where we are, where we're going?
Yes, I did receive feedback from several town council members. We've tried to incorporate all of those changes into the final document. We, I believe, at least, you know, town staff put in front of you this evening, the amended, the last copy that, that we updated as late as, I think it was four o'clock this afternoon with all of the changes that have been suggested. Looking for the council to at least have a consensus that, you know, this is the document and, you know, and, and we would give Randy Frake Associates the go-ahead to, you know, move forward with the placing the ads and, and doing the, the search.
Okay. I, I read the original one, but I haven't read the, this final draft. So can we have until, let's say, the end of this week? If you don't hear from us, you can, if there's any other changes, we can let you know quickly? And if you don't hear from us, it's a go-ahead and?
That's.
Is that okay with everybody to, to do it that way? Just give it a read, one last read-through, make sure it's, you know, all in good order and then let Robert know that you're good with the final, final? Is that okay with you, Robert?
Yeah, maybe push back the, you know, the, the date when, you know, maybe push the calendar back, you know, a couple of days, but I don't think that's a big.
Okay.
Big deal.
Well, if we, if we can make every effort to get back to Robert quickly within a day, then we can get it on the way and get it moving. Is that all right?
If you could do it by the end of Business Day tomorrow, that would be fine. Okay.
Okay. And if you don't hear, then you'll just assume all is good.
Yep.
Okay. Great. All right. Anything else, Robert?
Nope, that's all I have.
Okay. Does anybody have anything else they'd like to share?
Actually, I do have one item.
Go ahead.
I have been working on the town budget. I anticipate that on March 7th, we'll be presenting that. The overall increase is about 3.5%, 3.5%, which is a little bit higher than what we've experienced in previous years. I will tell you that the inflation rate for 2021 was 7%. So we're about half the inflation rate in terms of, in terms of the increase. We, you know, based on the governor's budget and the revenues that we're projecting, you know, overall, if it were not for revaluation, we would probably be pretty close to a zero, zero, zero mill increase between the, you know, 3.6, 3.5% increase in the budget. We're, we're expecting, you know, with, you know, with all of the other revenues that would have happened, assuming that, you know, without revaluation, our grant list would have went up probably on average about 1% plus some additional dollars from the AmeriCole project, that, you know, we would have brought in revenues to pretty much cover that amount. So, so it looks, and that includes dollars coming in from the, from the governor's budget, you know, that would offset some of the car tax loss as a result of, of, of putting a cap on, on, on how we can tax cars at 29 mils, you know, so, and our mill rate this year was, is, is 34.58, 34.58. So that difference, you know, brings in, you know, close to $1 million in revenue according to the governor's budget. So, you know, right now, and, and, you know, we're going to refine that as we get to, we get to March 7th, but people will see some savings on their cars, you know, and, and depending upon where they fall with respect to revaluation, that's really, that's really going to make the difference in terms of, at least my initial, you know, look at the budget, that's really going to make the difference in terms of whether somebody's going to see a tax increase or a tax decrease. And we'll have some examples available at the council meeting so you get a feel for that.
Okay.
Like to think that's good news, but, you know, I guess it depends on where you're, where you're sitting with regards to revaluation.
Well, more to come, right?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you.